Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the July meeting of the East Central Independent School District for trustees to order. Ms. Berrientos, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Del Brazil.
Present.
Michael Feller.
Present.
Victor Garza.
Yep.
John Massengel. James Mulkey.
Yeah.
Steve Bryant.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, the Prayer and the Pledge. Mr. Toscano, please.
So. Please stand for the Prayer and Pledge. Dear Lord, we thank you for all of the great things that you give us each and every day, the blessings we have. We thank you for all the continued support we have from all the board members, the community, and our folks from the business sector. Please bless them each and every day. As we move through the summer and prepare for this next year, continue to provide us with the wisdom and guidance so that we can, we provide the best quality education to all of our students. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge is to be Texas, one state, one home, indivisible. Thank you, sir. All right, Agenda Item Three, Awards and Recognitions.
Trustees, this is a program that we began to participate in last year sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards, and the primary purpose of this program is for local communities to identify business partners who have supported our students and our staff and our school district in one of many ways. The name of the program is Businesses Who Stand Up for Texas Public Schools, and so we felt that it was worthy last year to recognize some of our many friends in the business sector, and so we wanted to do that again this year. So, Ms. Colas?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Toscano. Good evening, Mr. Bryant, members of the board, and our audience members. Tonight, we're recognizing four local businesses through the Texas Association of School Boards' Businesses Standing Up for Public Education Recognition Program. This program was established to support and celebrate the importance of communities and businesses creating partnerships. The support of local businesses and other community organizations is vitally important to public schools in Texas. These collaborative efforts yield creative, exciting opportunities for students as they advance their learning. Our business partners' assistance and their allegiance to the public education efforts in East Central ISD speak volumes to the community, the teachers, and the students regarding their commitment to our efforts in educating all students in meaningful ways. The first business we'll be recognizing this evening is Chick-fil-A. Accepting the award on behalf of owners Mr. and Mrs. Don Spice, who had a previous engagement this evening, is Jerry Sealy, the senior manager of the Brook City-based Chick-fil-A. Thank you for being here. As community partners, Mr. and Mrs. Spice and Chick-fil-A have supported various efforts in building relationships and supporting teachers as well as students. The Chick-fil-A mascot visits our campuses to promote family events and encourage participation. The Spice family often provides Chick-fil-A incentives to students for their attendance and academic achievement. During new teacher orientation, the Spice family provides breakfast for our new staff as a warm welcome to East Central and the south side of San Antonio. The Spice family has been supportive of East Central ISD even though their restaurant isn't officially located in our district because they truly are friends of Texas public schools, and we are very grateful. Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize Republic Waste Management. Here to accept the certificate of appreciation for Republic Waste Management are Division Manager John Carrington and Katherine Engelberg, who is the operations supervisor. Republic Waste Management has supported East Central ISD pre-kindergarten programs for a number of years by holding a recycling event and sponsoring our pre-K students by providing bus transportation, allowing them to attend the onsite event. With their support, our students have been able to learn about the effects of waste disposal, recycling strategies, and how landfills operate. Republic Waste Management also contributes to the East Central community by supporting the East Central School Foundation. We are truly thankful for their partnership and support. Thank y'all for being here tonight. Next, we're recognizing Randolph Brooks Federal Credit Union. Joining us tonight to accept the certificate of appreciation for RBFCU are Janine Lee and Jennifer Crawford. These ladies, along with others, have been major supporters of East Central ISD. Randolph Brooks Federal Credit Union representatives attend career days across the district to talk to students about careers in finance. They provide goodie bags for new teachers at orientation, and they provide breakfast for staff at the East Central Job Fair. Randolph Brooks Federal Credit Union has been unwavering in their partnership with us and their commitment to the EC community. For their partnership and support, we are tremendously grateful. Thank you. Next, we are proud to recognize Toyota Motor Manufacturing of Texas. Here representing Toyota Motor Manufacturing of Texas, we're pleased to welcome Mario LaSoya, Director of Government Relations and External Affairs. Mr. LaSoya and Toyota are supportive of STEM opportunities at East Central High School. Through Mr. LaSoya's efforts, Toyota Motor Manufacturing of Texas began the first-ever Alamo City Electrathon, or ACE, race. Our ECHS Electrathon team, along with five other high schools from other districts, spent the better part of last school year designing and building and testing an electric car model that was used in a race held at San Antonio Speedway, a race that the East Central team, by the way, took first place in.
All right.
I might add that Mr. LaSoya and Toyota teamed up to create an authentic opportunity for learning that will stay with the students for a lifetime. So, thank you, Mr. LaSoya. We are very grateful for your partnership.
I ask that I could address the attendees, and then thank you for the opportunity. What are the trustee's congratulations for what you're doing, and thank you for allowing the superintendent and the staff to do what they do. You know, a quick story. Well, first of all, if anyone aware, we have a manufacturing facility, not department here. It's the only place in the world that a Tundra is built, if anyone's unaware. One of two places in the world that a Tundra is built. We build about a thousand trucks a day, a lot of trucks. So, when we talk about offering jobs to people that live in the communities where we live and operate, it's essential for us to engage in local school districts, to provide those jobs to the people in those communities, and stop bringing people from outside our community. In my opinion, that's not true economic development. And our local district is southwest, because they're right there adjacent to our property. And we've been sponsoring them in several standard events for the last two years, one of which was an electric car program. And we traveled to Florida, Michigan, and the like, and one day I met with them, and I said, "Why do I keep sponsoring you to go away from our community?" And quick reply was, "We don't have any competition here." And I said, "Well, we need to fix that." So, what we did is we thought, we put that together, and we thought, "What if we create an environment and invent where people from around Texas or around the country come to San Antonio, could be here instead of us going elsewhere?" Right? So, we immediately invested in six different teams, one of them being a circle team, and within a two-and-a-half-month window, the teams got their cars together and competed in the first-ever Alamo City electric car. So, our expectation is going to grow next year and continue to grow in the years to come. And our real agenda is to build the workforce of tomorrow with the children that live in the communities, with the that operate. So, congratulations, East Central, and we hope to continue working and work with you, and I know they have some issues in the yard for you.
Thank you.
If y'all didn't see the article in the San Antonio news, it was in the local account. It was great. That's why I was across the side with the ones.
We certainly appreciate our partnership with y'all. It is public education, and it doesn't work without you. I think you can see the diversity of the partnerships that we have with the commercial community, manufacturing, banking, environmental services, and someplace to go get something deep, which is really important. All of those things have to fit together, and it makes common sense for us to partner with folks in y'all's business, and so we certainly appreciate what you do for us. Thank you again. All right. We're going to take a short break right now. I know we just started, but we're going to let those of you who need to go do business, go do business, and then we'll get back to ours. So, we'll take about 10 minutes. Thank you. All right. We have all our partners gone, and now it's just family. So, here we go. Do we have any public comments? No? No public comments? All right. Agenda Item Five, Superintendent's Reports. First up is Personnel.
Yes, sir. In your electronic packet, this month's report is between pages 10 and 17. As is typical this time of year, it's a very extensive report. Did a little history checking there, and relatively consistent with where we've been in recent years. In fact, the months of May, June, and July, which are really active months in our profession. Last year, we were at about eighty-seven employees this time last year for the three months, who had resigned, retired, et cetera, and this year, we're at ninety-three. So, we're in the same ballpark, no major reason for alarm or concern, but I would like to note that the climate in public education, as we're all aware, has been pretty tough on staff, those that are in the classroom in particular. So, we've seen definitely in recent years a lot more strain and anxiety in our business than we have historically, at least in the twenty years I've been in the business, that's for sure. If you have any questions or need additional information about any of those, as usual, do not hesitate to contact me.
Okay. Next up is Maintenance Department update.
Yes, sir. At this time, I'd like to call up our maintenance coordinator, Mr. Stephen Prair.
Good evening, Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, board members. Thank you for letting us come up here and brief on our maintenance department. I see a bunch of teachers or principals and staff. Thanks for understanding the past year through our transition and ups and downs. So, if you hear me say no, I've learned to give an explanation on no. All right, we'll see if a maintenance guy can work the slides and talk at the same time.
So, the presentation is both in your packet and behind us, so your call. iPad or turn over your shoulder.
We have a few slides. We're going to talk about maintenance goals, and then we'll talk about how we're doing on those goals, and then we'll get into how we are managing these goals and how we hit them. So, on the goals, I won't talk with paper. You'll see, our main goal in performance, culture, climate, and finance are the three main areas. On performance, we look at it that it's all about what people see in the district as far as education and how the building and facilities are maintained. We feel it goes a long way with not only principals, teachers, and staff members, but mainly the kids. When they come to school with parents, they want to see a good facility, and that induces better learning. Culture, climate, we wanted to make sure that we're actually getting out there and changing some of the views or perception of who the maintenance department is and what we're about. Finance, along with everyone, you know, we're trying to be physically responsible in what we buy and what we get for the district. Some of the things we implemented to on performance is we set a ground schedule, the grounds of maintenance, to physically be out at every campus every week. So, we put together a schedule, and I feel it's working pretty well. The facilities look good, so every week, they're at every facility. The grass isn't growing, they're trimming trees and cutting hedges. Beautiful. Maintenance priority goals, we're trying to do work orders within three to five days. We don't always get there. Summertime hit us really hard, but, and you'll see in some other slides here, that we've really gotten it down to three to five days. We manage it in different categories, which you'll see. Project management, as we know, the bond's going on. A couple of our guys are really busy doing that stuff and working with some of the people in this room to make sure the contractors are doing what they're intended to do. Culture, climate was a big one. We wanted to make sure that we were getting out, talking to principals, talking to teachers, talking to staff, addressing their needs, and also talking to them about future projects or what they would like to see. Some of those we can meet, some of them we can't, but we really try to meet all of them. Scheduling visits with campuses, making sure that we're out there and talking to principals, that was my main goal. Creating yearly schedules, we're trying to get a district-wide schedule on the stuff that's by law, so fire alarm testing, backflow preventers, elevators, so we have a schedule of that every year, and nothing gets missed. On the fiscal responsibility part, three percent unused funds back. Linda, Matt, and Judy are much better at that than I am, because we try to get stuff for our guys and stuff we need, and they've been really great. So, they haven't reeled me in too much, but, so I thank everybody in the district for helping the maintenance department out on that. In-house parts storage, we've just upgraded our lights in our warehouse, and the next step of that is to get rid of parts that we've had for years and years and years that we no longer use. So, through the inventory process and money-wise, we'll get with Judy and get that done for the property. Energy management, our guys do a really good job, and the whole district does. I was surprised when I came on board at the cost savings that we do in the district through the program, so I want to thank everybody for that. Next, we'll go into a little bit deeper, how we manage our stuff as far as goals. So, the top one there is work orders, that we go out and physically check on from our guys. So, on any given week, we try to average thirty-seven, and we're doing ninety-two percent on that. Doing very good on that. Second goal is work orders completed. Felt the need that we needed, not that our guys don't work, but there were some gaps that we needed to fill, and so by managing properly and the managing the work orders, we're averaging anywhere from one hundred and twenty-four to one hundred and forty. It's increased a week completing. We get anywhere from one hundred and twenty-two and so on put in every week. Last one is how we manage or we evaluate our goal, and that's work orders zero to five days, five to twenty-nine, and then thirty and above. We've hit it really hard on the thirty and above. We got that down. Our next goal is getting five to thirty, getting them down the way, and hopefully get on a schedule that we can get three to five days, at least somebody out there evaluating it and letting you know what's going on. Sometimes we need parts, so it don't jump in at home for five to thirty. Next one is the survey that was done last year. Shows our increase as far as visibility, communication, and cooperation with the school. So, it's really increased in every category, and we're really happy about that. Some of the downside of it is some of our techs go out and they're not always cordial, and they're not always getting with the principal or whatever. So, we're working on that with our guys, but they're getting really good at it, much This is just what we're trying to do in the future, what we're looking at. Customer service, of course, being out there with the principals and the schools. School dude is how we manage our work orders, so we're getting better at that system. Communication is always the key. Getting out there, talking to people, streamlining our meetings, getting on the point, getting in and out of our meetings so they're productive. Staff and training, our guys can always use training. Things change daily, HVAC, electrical, so we're always, we're always trying to get them some training on that stuff. Budget, I think in the future, we're looking at putting schedules together for long-term plans on systems, facilities, whether it's flooring, lighting, HVAC systems, just upgrading different areas. And that's all I have. If y'all have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
You're averaging one hundred and twenty-four work orders per week, am I right?
Yes, sir.
And you say you're getting out there three to five days. How are you accomplishing that?
Our guys have done a really good job. When the work orders come in, our supervisors evaluate them, and the ones that are missing details, we get back with the campuses. So, our guys aren't wasting time, not wasting time, but driving to a campus to look at a work order, then evaluating the work order, and then realizing they don't have the parts, so then they got to come all the way back to shop. So, we've done a good job of being on the front end of it, making sure that when the guys go to the job, they know what they're going to be doing, and so we've been able to increase our work orders.
So, a principal, if he puts a work order in, they can look for the job to be completed in three to five days, am I right?
We're working on it, yes, sir. That's our goal. We've done a pretty good job. Sometimes the summer hit, had a lot of job orders come in, so we're figuring out a different way to manage that, so it's done throughout the year, not at the end of the year.
Do the work orders come in in priority, or the first one calls in, or what?
They come in, not a priority, but they come, they all have the ability to put them on at the school.
Yeah.
And so, they come to a central person, which is our secretary.
Right.
And she evaluates it, and then she'll give it to a supervisor to look at, and then we prioritize it with our trade.
Trade.
Yes, sir. Thanks for that.
Anybody else? How does your preventive maintenance program fit in with what you're doing here?
We do, our big preventive is on HVAC systems. We have a guy that goes around and changes filters, cleans coils. That's the big preventive side, and we've even taken it a step further, where now we're actually testing the units and doing some adjustments on them to make them run smoother and more efficient, and we're getting rebates on those.
Okay.
The other side is we want to increase our PMs on all our systems. So, it takes some guys while they're out there to job for, say, plumbers, and they're in a mechanical room, to take an extra few minutes and evaluate the boiler, see what it looks like, see if it's running right, see if the flame's right, and all that good stuff.
Okay. And the wastewater treatment facilities that we have, you have those on a regular maintenance schedule as well?
I do, yes, sir. Dale is out there every day. Sarah, as y'all know, is on board with us. They're out there every day. The treatment plants are doing outstanding right now. They're running great. Sarah's been very helpful, but they are on PM, and we evaluate the pumps, the blowers, and all that good stuff.
How many work orders do, does your staff self-initiate from a campus visit or something like that? So, if they're going out to the campus to fix something, and they notice something else is wrong, are they self-initiating those work orders, or are they waiting for the campus to tell them something's broken?
Our building mechanics, which are out at the campuses every day in different campuses that they're assigned to, they're doing a much better job of doing that.
Okay.
So, when they get their work orders down and they have, or the students are not around, then it gives them a little time to walk around in the classrooms, evaluate what needs to be done, and they're doing them much better. So, I would probably say twenty percent, thirty percent is self-generated by then.
Okay. All right.
Well, thank you, guys, for everything you do anyway for the maintenance department.
I appreciate it.
Been observing the campuses and everything that I, the campuses I go to, looks very nice and everything, you know?
I appreciate it. I'll pass it on to the team, and on behalf of the department, they thank y'all for everything that the board and the teachers and the principals and everybody in the staff has done for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, upcoming events.
Trustees, if you can take a look at your hard copy calendar for July and August for just a moment, in particular, the month of August. Some dates that I want to point to and call to your attention are, first and foremost, August 1st. August 1st is the first day of our leadership retreat this year. Staff will be meeting at Oak Crest Middle School this year. Those are all of our principals, assistant principals, academic facilitators, academic deans, department directors, coordinators. Leadership's on both the curriculum instruction side as well as the business and operations side, and it's between ninety and a hundred staff representing our leadership corps. We'll spend three days together at Oak Crest, and on the first, Mr. Bryant certainly comes and addresses and welcomes them back, but any of you that are able to show up that morning will have breakfast and coffee, and you'll have the ability to say hello, if you can. They'd love to see you. And we'll be starting at seven-thirty in the morning on the first, and that's not on your calendar. It's, well, see if you can maybe jot that down there, Mr. Mulkey.
Okay.
If you can.
Okay.
If you can make it, we'd love it. All right. On Friday, the fourth.
Reserve seat.
Yes, sir. We'll give you a reserved seat, front and center.
Thanks a lot. I'll always sit in the back.
No, sir. No, sir. We're working on that.
What kind of tacos you going to have?
What kind would you like, sir? Bean and cheese. On Friday, the fourth, if you'll recall, we've been, we've set a goal to embark on a process of creating a system for accounting to the community for the outcomes that we provide or are producing as a school system. The state of Texas is calling this kind of endeavor a community-based accountability system. We're not interested in necessarily calling that, but the general idea, as you guys are aware, is that we want the community to be a partner with us, from parents to students to staff to business leaders in our community, to be a partner with us in identifying the outcomes that matter most, that are meaningful and relevant to all the folks that we serve in our schools and in our community, and in addition to the state's accountability system, create something that's more robust, more complete in terms of an accounting system. And so, this is our initial meeting with a community group, if you will. We're finalizing that list, finalizing commitments and invitations. We'll send you guys a formal invitation as well, if you're interested in either participating or coming by and saying hello as they begin that work. August 4th is the first day, and it's an all-day gathering. We'll follow that up with a half-day meeting that will let you guys know. Actually, we have that date identified, don't we, Taffey? Shannon?
Eighteenth? I believe it's the twenty-ninth.
Okay. We'll confirm that with you, but the...
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth? Okay.
And it's the half-day.
Okay. Again, we'll go ahead and send that invitation to all of you, if you can make it, for any part of that. That'd be fantastic, and they'd certainly appreciate seeing your support by being there. On the 10th is another date of interest. We'll be bringing all of the new teachers to our district together for what will be their new teacher orientation. They'll spend three days together, and on the 10th, we'll be gathering, I think, is it Legacy again this year?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay. So, we'll start that off at eight o'clock in the morning. Is that correct? Seven-thirty. We're stealing extra thirty minutes on everything this year. So, seven-thirty on the 10th, you know, all the new teachers to the district will be assembled, and again, the ability to... We're stealing extra 30 minutes on everything this year. So, 7:30 on the 10th, you know, all the new teachers to the district will be assembled, and again, the ability to say welcome to the family is there, and also to just informally meet and greet. Moving on to the 16th, that is our kickoff event, formerly known as welcome back. We say kickoff because many of the folks in this room, and many of the folks in the business and operations departments have never left. And so, we're really kicking off a new year, we're not welcoming them, welcoming them back. And so, we've gotten a little more clear on that clarification going into this year. So, that's at the Florisville Event Center, 8:30 in the morning until approximately 11:30 on the 16th. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is August 17th. Moving on to the...
Did you say before you get off the 16th, is that the same coaches meeting?
Yes, sir.
Can I put that on there?
Yes, sir.
What time is that?
So, 1 o'clock that afternoon, all the coaches in the district will be assembled in the technology classroom, which is in the parking lot adjacent to Heritage Middle School.
That's at 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, yes, sir. We'll have all middle and high school coaches there, and that'll be their official welcome back, if you will. And so, if you can make that event, if nothing else to say hello, they'd appreciate that. And then, we are, last two events, August is very busy, always, as you know. On the 30th is our Meet the Hornets event for this year. You all know what that is, 7 o'clock at the high school stadium. And then, on the 31st, we're penciling that in as a possible special board meeting. We are hoping that the special session is complete by then, if for some reason, they were to finish that session sooner, we'll work together with Mr. Bryant, see if there's an earlier date, an earlier opportunity for us to gather to, to handle that business. But as of now, we'll tentatively plug in the 31st.
Do we have a time?
5:30 is when we typically have a special meeting.
5:30, if everybody can make that. If we need to push it to 6, we can do that as well.
Will 5:30 work for everybody, if we do it on that date?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I know that most everybody's been busy, but it looks like it's fixing to get busier. Good stuff. Does anybody have any questions about any of that stuff? Not, as always, get with Mr. Toscano, if you need any additional information about any of those items. Moving on to our action agenda, item A, set public meeting date for budget hearing and proposed tax rate.
Trustees, per guidelines set by the Texas Comptroller's Office, the board is required to set a meeting in which they'll take action on approving the budget, as well as the tax rate. Tentatively, as we mentioned, or officially, we're calling that August 31st. And the proposed tax rate is $1.04 for maintenance and operation, which is what it has been, and 30 and a half cents for interest and sinking. And as you're aware, with both sales of our bonds, we've moved from 2015, $1.04 on the M&amp;O side, we were at 23 and a half cents. And now, after all of the bond sales are complete, again, we're at $1.04 on M&amp;O and 30 cents, 30 and a half cents on the INS side, which means that the total tax increase, the total tax impact of the bond is 7 and a half cents. Again, what we told taxpayers is what we anticipated, 16 to 18 cents, and we've closed at 7 and a half cents. And so, Judy, is there anything to add to any of that?
We'll get our certified values, I think, tomorrow, and then we'll have a little bit of an idea that we can maybe even show a little, what we have on, so we can have a certified value.
Okay. Good. Recommend that, huh? Yes, sir.
Trustees, I recommend the board consider taking action on the budget and tax rate for 2017, 2018 during the special board meeting on August 31st, 2017. I recommend a proposed tax rate of $1.04 for maintenance and operations, and 30 and a half cents for interest and sinking.
Thank you. You have a recommendation from the superintendent?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
We have a motion by Mr. Feller. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Garza. Any questions?
Motion made.
Any questions? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So, that, we didn't set the tax rate, we just set a meeting to set the tax rate. All right. Item B, proposals for improvements to East Central ISD Administration Building and Boardroom Building.
Trustees, as you're aware, we have been in the process of making improvements to the administration office and boardroom. Roof repairs, repairs to the exterior of the administration building, and the boardroom roof, getting some attention, as well as resealing, some exterior work as well, and leveling this building. So, we had competitive sealed proposals submitted as we took this, this program to the market on June 19th, and Mr. Selby will provide the board with information regarding the proposals that were received, as well as the tabulations and subsequent recommendation. And this is in your miscellaneous packet, by the way.
It's Mr. Bryant, Mr. Toscano, board members. As Mr. Toscano indicated, we did go out on competitive seal proposal for improvements to the central office or administration building in for what we call the boardroom, which is the old schoolhouse. The board was gracious enough to approve competitive sealed proposals back earlier in the year for going out and procuring these services. And a competitive seal proposal allows the district to evaluate those proposals that come in based on price, but more than just price. In addition to price, we look at things such as relevant experience, quality of services, experience in school construction, of course, price, proposed personnel, financial status, contractor safety record, record, and other relevant factors. Whenever we receive these proposals, and you can see the attached bid sheet on your packet, you'll see that you have prices, and we're gonna look at and propose that the board consider both the base bid and the add alternate. What we did was separate the cost for doing improvements to the boardroom as an alternate. And you'll see those prices range from $459,177 all the way up to well over 630, excuse me, $722,000. So, you can see that some people were more hungry than others, and, and some of them didn't really need to work, but whatever reason, thought they would propose. As we evaluated this, it was a team effort, it was both our staff that looked at these different proposals, along with Pawanka Sturrock, the architects that we engaged to help put together the plans for this and the bid documents, and to then do, help us in the proposal evaluation. Based on those evaluations, the staff is recommending, actually, the second lowest bidder, which is LD Tibbin. And the difference in price between ASD consultants, who was the lowest proposal, was $459,177 versus Tibbin, which is $490,853. This additional, a little bit over $31,000, we felt was worth the additional money because of a variety of things. One, Tibbin, we've done work with them before, we know that they do quality work, we're very confident that they can do the work here and do it well. If there is an issue, and there's always gonna be an issue in construction, they've always been able to come through and address those issues and resolve them to our satisfaction. What was interesting, ASD consultants actually used Tibbin as their roofer for the bid, which made us a little wondering what, how they got a lower price than Tibbin themselves had, and also did not attend the pre-proposal meeting, which is concerning, because there were some, one of the things that was included in the proposal and addressed at the pre-proposal, that there is a contingency, and the difference in contingency was very similar to what the difference is in price between ASD and Tibbin. But we feel like that Tibbin, you know, we, since they were the highest point, received the highest points, it allowed us, by law, to then go and talk to them and say, hey, you sure you got everything in there? You feel comfortable with your numbers? Did you include every, these things? And we went through those with them, and they said they did, and they felt very confident that they had all the money in there they should, and that they could do this job in the timeframe we would like, and do a quality job. So, as a result of that, in using this matrix, we are recommending LD Tibbin for board consideration to, to replace the roof at the admin building. We will also do some repairs on the walkway where water had gotten through and done some damage in there. We'll also go through and replace any wood that's around the outside that may have had some rot in it. We're gonna paint the whole thing, we're gonna put some new screens in there, they don't have holes in them, and they're actually closed, which we thought would be nice. Also, part of that base bid was improvements to drainage, both in front of the boardroom, which if you have ever noticed, it's like a little pool whenever it does rain out there, and also to getting water to move out of this courtyard a little bit better than it has in the past. That, those things combined will probably help the boardroom itself keep from settling as much as it does. The alternate bid is going to not replace the roof, because it's the original historic roof, and you aren't gonna get another roof like this. But what we are gonna do is have them clean it. There's a sealant that's made for historical roofs that they put on, that helps preserve that metal, and also obviously helps seal it if there is any small openings. The roof itself is in good shape, it just needs some attention. We're gonna have them go through and replace any wood that may have some, been compromised through water or moisture, replace that, recaulk everything, and then repaint it. And also, part of an allowance is to have somebody come in and level the building. So, it's kind of the broad scope of the work that's going to be done, and be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding the proposal and the recommendations.
I'm just curious why there's such a large discrepancy in these numbers on the add-alt column?
Yeah, that was concerning to us, and that's part of why we talked to Tibbin about that. They didn't admit to this, but sometimes they'll move money out of that to be more competitive in some other areas. Whenever you do those base bids plus the alternates, you can see some fluctuations in there, and sometimes they do that to give themselves a little bit of a competitive advantage. I don't know that, but that's, that's all.
Yeah, 'cause it's a way...
But we did confirm, okay, this is, you have all of this in, and you're gonna do all of this for this price, and they confirmed that they were going to do that.
Thank you.
Yes. Good question, though. We had the same question.
Jim, you, you mentioned that Tibbin had the highest point total, but on this sheet that you've given us, ASD consultants had the highest point total. I've got 30 for ASD and 27 and a half for Tibbin.
That, that's just for the price.
Oh, okay.
That's just for the prices, I'm sorry. I have the breakdown, if you would like to see it.
Okay, no, it's fine.
What, the total points, if you look at all those points included, the price is always gonna be the highest total part of that matrix. And of course, if you're lowest, you get all of them, so that's why ASD got the 30 points. Tibbin was the second, and based on the number of proposals and the differences in proposal amounts, they got 27 and a half points on pricing. But overall, Tibbin got 80.5, ASD got 79, and then the next lowest, or highest one was RL Rhodey.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I think we're ready for you, sir.
Yes, sir. I recommend board consideration of accepting the proposal submitted by LD Tibbin for the improvements to East Central ISD Administration and the Boardroom Building at a proposed cost of $490,853.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent. Chair, entertain a motion. A motion by Ms. Berianta. Second by Mr. Feller. Any other questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, approval of Section 125 Flexible Benefit Plan Amendment.
Trustees, this time I'd like to call Ms. Shannon Burns to the podium to brief the board about the Section 125 Flexible Benefit Plan Proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Toscano, Mr. Bryant, and board members. So, as you may know, the 125 plan provides participants an opportunity to receive certain benefits on a pre-tax basis. In order to have that, we do have a, have to have a written 125 plan that meets the requirements for the Internal Revenue Code. So, our plan year runs from September 1st through August 31st, so this amendment would go into effect September 1st of 2017. Last year, we also amended our plan when we switched providers, I mean, when we entered into an interlocal agreement with First Financial Group of America. So, the amendments this year, the largest or the most significant change that we have is we're raising the maximum amount of benefits that employees are allowed to put on the cafeteria plan, and it's coming up from 20,000 to 40,000. So, right now, 20,000 doesn't cover the total potential benefits that an employee could put on the cafeteria plan. Our highest health insurance premium right now would exceed that alone. But at 40,000, we don't have a potential combination at this point that would reach the 40,000, but it's a high enough ceiling that we shouldn't have to amend that for a while. Other smaller changes, our current plan defines, is defined by September 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2017. So, this year, our, this amendment would allow it to be September 1st, 2017 through August 31st, 2018, and then it will roll over September 1st through August 31st every year after that, so we don't have to amend every year. In addition, we're changing the HSA and FSA limits, instead of defining the actual dollar amount limit that's currently in effect. It's going to just be rephrased, that it will increase as the IRS increases the limits for those. We're not changing the eligibility for the cafeteria plan, but we are revising some of the language that defines the eligibility. And then, we're also changing the plan to not have the specific carrier name for the type of benefit, just it's going to refer to the type of benefit. That way, if we change carriers, we don't necessarily have to change our plan. So, once we make these amendments, it should be a while before we would have to change it again. Are there any questions?
On the flexible spending versus the HSA account?
Yes.
Are we getting questions on those? I mean, what percentage of employees do we still have using an FSA?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but we do try to educate our employees a lot on what is available to them. So, our HSA is only available to employees who are on the high deductible plan, and that's determined by the IRS, and it has a much higher limit that they can put on. The FSA is available to any of the plans, high deductible. And the beauty of that is those employees can get that money, it's available to them September 1st. So, we, we're trying to educate, right now, we're in the middle of open enrollment, so we're sending out notices to our employees via email. You may have received a couple of parent links. We're providing opportunities, where we will have representatives from First Financial And then, of course, now that we have the online enrollment portal, if they wanna take care of that from their own device in their own home or consult with their spouse, and they don't, then they're able to do that as well. So we do put that information out there, and hopefully that they would take advantage of the tax savings. So with increasing insurance premiums, you know, hopefully they can take advantage of the cafeteria plan and at least reduce their tax liability to offset some of that cost.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant, trustees, I'd like to add, last year was the first year that we used First Financial to administer our benefits program. Last year was different in that you talked to one representative who can help you with your entire suite of benefits. In previous years, you had representatives from all of the different benefit programs, and you would have to meet with each one of them separately. It was much more confusing, it was more overwhelming, and we found that many of our folks weren't sure about the benefits that they had, much, much less the benefits that were even available. From a personal perspective, I was much more clear than ever last year with the third-party administrator from First Financial. So hopefully, going forward, employees can make much more wiser choices that meet their needs and take advantage of those benefits that we do offer that best suit them.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right.
Trustees, I recommend board approval of the attached Section 125 Flexible Benefit Plan and adoption agreement to be effective September one, 2017.
Have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the 125 Flexible Plan Benefit Agreement. Chair will entertain a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion by Mr. Garza, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Brazil. Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I know that's always difficult, very difficult. Benefits have become such a convoluted process. Too many, so many players in the, in the market and so many different plans that are available to folk. And then you throw the IRS in on top of it, it makes it even worse. So appreciate the work that y'all are doing on that. All right. Does any member wish to have a item pulled from the consent agenda? If not, chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So I'll move.
Have a motion by Mr. Garza, second by Mr. Feller. The consent agenda is approved via unanimous consent. All right. Before we call for an adjournment, do you have anything else for us, sir?
Sir, Mr. Bryant, trustees, Ms. Zott, I believe all the trustees have one of these?
Yes, but they will shortly.
Okay. So if you would, before you leave today, trustees in the, in the conference room, is this year's evaluation packet. At the next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll have an executive session to complete my annual evaluation. And just remind you, there's a couple of pieces of information in here that you're familiar with, but that I needed to point out, one of which is in Section Three. It's the commissioner recommended student performance domain, and this is included again, even though it hasn't been the most relevant piece of information for you, because the current commissioner is attempting to create something more meaningful, and in the meantime said, whatever you've been doing, per statute, keep doing it. And the problem with this document in the past is that it's old data. But it is useful in that you can attempt to, we can all attempt to identify some trends that perhaps we want to disrupt, but it is old data. It's, it's not from this past year, it's from the previous year. So it is, it tends to be a little confusing and overwhelming for you, and really all of us. But I wanted to point that out again. That's its entire purpose. It's just additional information, but it's a little antiquated. And then in that same section at the end is the one-page summary, where once you've worked your way through the packet, you can make your summary evaluation and any comments or questions that you have there, and you'll bring that with you. You'll bring the packet back from Mr. Bryant, and then you'll bring that document with you, you know, hopefully it'll have your notes in there or anything that you'd like to discuss among your colleagues. And then if you have any questions of me, you'll have that opportunity as well that evening. So between now and then, if you have any questions or need additional information, please let me know. Yes, sir. They're on the conference room table. If you please grab one on your way out.
Grab one before we leave. All right. Anybody else have anything else? If not, we appreciate everything that y'all are doing over the summer. We know that Welcome Back doesn't mean a whole lot to this group, because you're always here, and we appreciate it because it keeps the district going. Y'all are the foundation of the district, and we very much appreciate that. I hope that everybody's had a chance to get off this summer. If you haven't, hopefully you'll have a chance to, to do that soon. I will tell you that in my driving through the district, I see an awful lot of cars at schools early and late and around district facilities. So we do appreciate your dedication, but everybody needs some time off. Get out, rest, recuperate, find your family members, give them a big old hug, tell them that you appreciate them, and we appreciate them loaning you to us for as much time as you spend with us. So with that, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
We have several motions, several seconds. We are adjourned via unanimous consent. Thank you.